Well, good evening and welcome to the City of Pasco's workshop meeting. It is Monday, August 25th, 2025. The council thanks you for being part of our city government at workshop meetings. The council discusses issues, but no formal action is taken. Agenda packets are available on the City Pasco's website at www.pasco-wa.gov/agenda. This meeting is also being televised live on PSC TV, channel 191 on Spectrum Cable in Pasco and Richland, and is streamed on the city's Facebook page, website, YouTube channel, and Microsoft Teams webinar. This and previous council meetings video is available on the city's website. Lastly, the public may submit their comments and/or questions by contacting the city manager, city clerk, or by asking the Pasco Ask Pasco app. With that, let's get the roll call.
Thank you. Councilmember Barajas?
Present.
Councilmember Blaisdale?
Present.
Councilmember Harpster?
Mr. Harpster is excused for tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Peralas?
Here.
Mayor Protem Grimm?
Here.
And Mayor Milney?
I am here.
Thank you.
So we have six present, and with that, let's get the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, yes, with that, my math was off a little second. There's five presidents. I keep thinking that we're going to get that replacement, but that is in the works. So with that, we are going to jump to number four, which is verbal reports from council members. Do I have any members of the council that would like to report on what they did this last week? So we're going to start off with Mayor Protem Grimm.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Like several others up here, I was at the barbecue for the employee appreciation last week that Mr. Rice, don't see him here, obviously maybe wiped him out after doing it, but he did an excellent job just putting that all together and not only the cooking, but that is a lot to cook for that many people, and it looked like just the employees and the team members really appreciate it. So good on him, it was good barbecue, and the weather was pretty good, and just really appreciated the opportunity to be a part of that. And then also, I was invited to go, we had a legislative tour in town, and I had the opportunity to try to advocate for our needs here in Pasco of various transportation projects, including the Road 76 overpass and other projects, and you know, we really need three. We could sure use one at Foster Wells where we had some fatalities, a couple fatalities just in the last two weeks, and out at, of course, A Street and US 12, and of course the Road 76, and you know, even north of here at Crest Lock at the Country Mercantile over the weekend, there was another fatality, and I know that's just outside of the Pasco city limits, but I think all the more it just speaks to the need of these safety improvements within our transportation infrastructure, and just hoping we can get some help with that. So thank you.
Well, thank you for that report, and thank you for your time and dedication. Hopefully, yes, we could get some money and get some of these vital projects done. So with that, Councilwoman Ross.
Thank you. I won't add too much on top of what Mayor Protem Grimm said. Oh, my gosh, it's going to be a little bit. It's going to take a little bit. Regarding the appreciation lunch, I don't want to add too much, like I said, but one thing I do want to highlight, it was great barbecue, and it was great to see all the staff that were out there, all the staff that make sure that City of Pasco runs. Thank you, everyone here. Thank you, everyone, if you're watching, I don't know that you're all watching, but hopefully the word gets out, and thank you, everyone, for making sure Pasco runs safely, effectively, and efficiently. Thank you, staff.
Thank you for that, Blatch, and not seeing anything else. This last week, I did, as my first duty as an elected mayor, I did the ribbon cutting for Orion High School, and had a good time, and it was good to meet all the community and members that were out there, it was quite a crowd. So again, it's great, we talked about one high school, and we're actually able to have two new ones, so very proud of our city. And with that, we will move on in the agenda, and we're going to jump to item five, which is items for discussion with opportunity for public comments. The public may comment on each topic scheduled for discussion, up to two minutes per person with a total of eight minutes per item. If opposing sides wish to speak, then both sides receive an equal amount of time to speak up with four minutes for each side. So with that, we're going to jump to 4A, which is the, or 5A, I'm sorry, resolution project acceptance of the West Pasco Water Treatment Plant Phase Two, and this is going to be by Director Maria Sarah.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. We are presenting to you the work performed by Apollo Inc. in the second phase of expansion of West Pasco Water Treatment Plant. We have some general pictures of the location of the plant and some of the renderings from the design phase. This project had a mix of funding through ARPA, Department of Health Drinking Water, low interest loans, and also rates. It is an $11 million contract with our contractor, and all the work was performed in, sorry, consistently with standards and specifications that were prepared for this project. You're seeing some before pictures, and then some of the work while it was occurring. The Phase Two project was focused on pumping capacity and some power improvements to that facility to ensure that we were able to distribute the water production that was already increased in the Phase One. So this plant originally was built for 6 million gallons per day, and Phase Two expanded to 12 million gallons per day, and there are plans for a next phase of expansion that will take us to 18. So you're seeing some of the construction pictures, and then some of the completed work, and again, mostly focused on that pumping system and the new building that hosts those pumps, and some electrical improvements to make those pumps function at all times. And finally, a summary on the cost, you're seeing the bid award for $10,400,000 and rounding, and then change orders, there were several change orders, many of those accommodated for some transfer of work from Phase One into Phase Two to avoid overlap between those two and not damaging things that were just built, and also changes in tax and some adjustments to electrical components. So final construction cost came up at $11,100,000, and as I mentioned, there's three funding sources that made this possible. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Well, thank you for the good report. Looks like we're going to start off with Mayor Protem Grimm.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and congratulations, Director Sarah. I'm looking at these pictures, and just when you had me out there a year or so ago, it's amazing to see just the progress and just, you know, it coming to completion here, and congratulations on getting so many grants to, for funding this. Just one question, just still kind of me, just having a learning curve, just being in this first term here, just at the bottom, I think it would be good for the public to understand this too, so where do those funds come from in the pot project funding? Since it came in under the engineer's estimate and the awarded budget, are we allowed to use some of those other funds first, and then the utility fund just kind of makes up the difference? Or how does, or do we have to kick it out first and then make up the difference with them?
Yes, in this case, there was no match requirement, so we're able to use external funds first and then local funds. What I must say is that this total cost for the project was focused on the construction contract, and so there are other costs that are not quite included here, such as the design cost and construction management cost that may have taken up some of that delta, but likely not all of it. So there will be some dollars that will be returned back to the end balance for water.
Love that, great answer, thank you. Well, thank you for that. Just a clarification, these are low interest loans for the amount, there was no actually like just grants where they're giving us the money, correct?
Yes, the ARPA funding was a grant, but the low interest loan from Department of Health is truly just a low interest loan with a repayment period of 20 years.
Okay, okay, just wanted to make sure I'm 100% clear on that. I'm not seeing any other lights, so let's move on to 5B, which is a resolution amended. Oh, I'm sorry, we got to get public comments. So do we have anybody in the audience that would love to talk about this? Going once, going twice. All right, well, now we'll move on to 5B, which is a resolution amended and related restate interlocal cooperative agreement Tri-Cities Home Consortium 2026, 2027, and 2028, and this is going to be by Deputy Director Craig Raymond.
Thank you very much, Mayor and council members, good evening, and I am filling in for Director Miller, who is out of town this week, so I'm happy to be here this evening. This agenda item is a brief update and discussion on an agreement renewal between the cities of Pasco, Richland, and Kennewick, known as the consortium, Big C, for the cooperation administration of the HUD Home Program locally. Just for reminder, HUD stands for United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, and home is short for Home Investment Partnerships Program, which aims to create affordable housing for low-income households through grants for states and localities. Since its formation in 1996, the Tri-Cities Home Consortium has facilitated the coordinated use of federal home funds to support housing programs in Richland, Kennewick, and Pasco. The purpose of creating a consortium is to maximize dollar amounts that can be allocated to our communities while spreading certain administrative burdens across the organization. The agreement stipulates who the lead agency is, and in this case, it will remain with the City of Richland for the foreseeable period. It also lays out roles and responsibilities for the lead as well as member communities. Naturally, much of the language of the agreement is driven by strict HUD guidelines and regulations, which are subject to periodic changes. The proposed agreement that is attached to your staff report is largely the same as previous agreements, but you will notice some very intentional changes that highlight areas of special emphasis that provide for greater clarity of roles and much greater transparency for each other as well as the interest in community. Staff looks forward to the city council taking final action on the agreement, but is here this evening to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Deputy Director Raymond. Looks like we're going to start off with Councilman Peralas.
Thank you, Mayor. What are we currently using the funds for? I think I read in there typically it's just for the home assistance, homeownership program?
Yeah, it can be rehab, it can be down payment assistance. There's a few different areas where we're typically using the funds, but it's all primarily geared towards low-income housing assistance.
Should we get $165,000? The City of Pasco gets 165K a year, so that's about $500,000 over the three years?
It can vary from year to year depending on what, you know, how Congress acts.
Okay.
And the different formulas, but it's pretty close to relatively consistent from year to year.
What have we been using for our prior, previous years? What has the money been used for?
Again, down payment assistance and home rehab are the primary areas.
Like going in and putting like new windows in, carpet, things like that?
Yeah, new sewer lines, water lines.
Okay.
Things of that nature.
So the city uses a good bulk of that? I mean, the city will obviously use it, but...
Well, we're allocated a certain amount, but all the communities share in those funds. Roughly 15% is set aside for the CHODO, which in this case is Habitat for Humanity, so they get a 15% set aside every year, and the City of Richland being the lead entity gets 10% for admin, and then the rest gets split up amongst the member communities.
Okay. Yeah, I was, yeah, I just was, didn't really get any lot of information by reading the stat packet, because I kind of feel like we really don't have a good relationship, I don't want to use the word good, we don't have an active relationship with the Pasco and Franklin County Housing Authority. They're looking to buy more development, and so I'm just kind of looking at ways, that's what I was trying to figure out, if we've, you know, I guess procured any money for them for development and what that would kind of look like. And in the, I mean, I know you haven't been there that long, what could that look like in assistance to them?
It would probably depend on what type of activities they're looking to apply for specific funds. You know, we do have one CHODO right now that's, as I mentioned, Habitat for Humanity. You know, I don't know if in the foreseeable future there would be necessarily any move to replace the CHODO, because I think they have a long history of successful program with that. But certainly, if they have projects in mind, they're welcome to apply for the funds.
So it's an active application and just all year round and?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Councilmember Peralas, I can add to that just a little bit. The CHODO fund that Deputy Director Raymond is speaking of, which Habitat for Humanity has applied, the Housing Authority is also eligible, and they have applied for it in the past, and so maybe in the recent years they've not, but this is definitely something that is funding set aside for entities like the Housing Authority and the Habitat for Humanity.
Yeah, because I know when I was on the Housing Authority in Kennewick, we applied for this money all the time, so I was just, didn't really see anything in there, and I couldn't really find anything. What does CHODO mean? I guess what's the acronym stand for?
Community Housing Development Organization, I believe.
Okay, oh, so yeah, that's what the Housing Authority is, okay. Thank you much, thank you.
All right, well, thank you for those questions. I'm not seeing any other council lights on, so anybody in the audience, welcome to. Again, not seeing anybody jump up or raise their hands, one, twice, three times. Okay, well, let's move on to 5C, which is the process improvements for recruitment and appointment of city boards and commissions. We are going to go with Assistant City Manager Angela Fishon.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So as part of the city's ongoing process improvement efforts, staff reviewed the recruitment and appointment process for the city boards and commissions. These citizen advisory groups are essential for delivering municipal services and supporting city council policy decisions. The Pasco Municipal Code requires the mayor to appoint qualified individuals to boards and commission, subject to council confirmation. The last process amendment was done in 2022 through Resolution Number 4262. And so tonight, here to propose a couple of changes after going through the process, these are meant to support efficiency as well as bring for applicants a little bit more standard process. So the first proposed change is to move from a continuous application process, which we currently do, to a semi-annual, and we've seen the other communities do this and be successful. With this, it provides an opportunity to focus in on specific boards and commissions that are up, so you can develop marketing plans, and you can focus your marketing efforts in those areas. It also provides predictable timelines when we'll open our applications every year for applicants, and then for staff and council looking to actually schedule time ahead of these recruitment processes so that it's easier for you all. The second proposed change is to evaluate eligible reappointments before advertising vacancies. So currently, we have all incumbents who, we have all incumbents reapply when they're eligible and interested in continuing. So we put out for a vacancy that might already be filled with someone who oftentimes, if they're filling a spot, that is not a full term. So someone could get on Planning Commission and only be on there for a year, and then you're looking to fill the vacancy for that next six years. So the proposed change here would be that the subcommittee actually determines if an interview is needed for these eligible incumbents before posting that vacancy. And then if they are eligible and are interested, they would go directly to an appointment, so you wouldn't have to go through that process. Benefits eliminates unnecessary postings and meetings and reduces time for staff, council, and the incumbents themselves. And then the third proposed change is actually to align start dates with a January 1 and a July 1, based on when these advisory groups were codified, depends on when their terms actually start. So the recommendation would be that we have either the January 1 or the July 1, so that way we can focus efforts again on the marketing efforts and recruitment efforts. So based on staff's experience of who usually applies for specific boards and commissions, so we see a lot of individuals who apply for arts and culture and historic preservation together, and parks and recreation, so what we're recommending or proposing is to align those so that they're a little more predictable. And here's an example schedule, so if we were going to do that every six-month recruitment process, we'd be looking at identifying vacancies that are going to start January 1 of 2026, determine the reappointment eligibility confirmed with the subcommittee. On interview dates, we'd advertise for those vacancies that are going to be left if they're not being filled by the incumbents, and then conduct interviews and make appointments November, and this would actually give us an opportunity to build an onboarding process. So right now, with the continuous advertising or continuous recruitment, you may get one person coming in, and then it's a little bit challenging to make that an efficient process. So this would actually allow us to, when we put out for those vacancies, determine some dates that we're going to hold onboarding. It supports the Open Public Meetings Act training, supports being able to get the staff liaisons connected ahead of time, so that's what we're kind of looking to do with some of these process changes. And again, benefits for the recommendations, efficiency, consistency, preparedness, and continuous improvement. With going to more focused recruitment efforts, we can look at what is working to capture these different boards and commissions and change those as we go, so we'll have some more metrics and more information behind those. So request is council direction on the proposed changes, and they're listed on the screen with what would be needed. So for proposed change number one and number two, we would need to bring back a resolution to clarify the process that's currently in place, and then if the alignment of the term start dates is of interest, we would bring back an ordinance to change the start dates. And that is everything, but I will go back a slide.
Well, thank you. Again, I appreciate this report. I know all of us on the dais have seen that a lot of times we go to these meetings and there's very few people there, or they get basically elected, appointed, and then they never show up, so anything we could do to make it more streamlined, a better, I'm all for it. So again, I just want to see Pasco be represented and be a better place. So with that, we are going to start off with Mayor Protem Grimm.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would be for all three of these changes, some of which for the reasons you gave already. If we can streamline the process, save staff time, and you know, let's give it a try. I think it's a great idea. Thank you for bringing this forward.
Thank you. I think it is a great idea as well, so Councilman Peralas.
Thank you. I guess my first, my first question, that the mayor creates the subcommittee, correct? So who's currently the subcommittee?
We have a new mayor, so...
Oh, okay. That was, thank you, thank you much. Again, my next question would be, who reviews the applications when they get put in initially?
Applications would be reviewed by the city clerk. So city clerk has a list of elements that they look at, eligibility, looking to see, so for the Arts and Culture Commission and the staff liaison, there's different positions, so making sure that one, that they applied for a position that's open, or they may be eligible for multiple positions, so whether that's the art professional and an artist, so looking at those requirements that are in the code as well. So that would be the first, to my knowledge, if they're eligible and they all, they pass forward to that subcommittee without any staff waiting or looking into if they should or shouldn't pass forward.
So it, I mean, it's strictly cursory to make sure that they're eligible?
Correct.
Okay, so, so for instance, for Planning Commission, what do you look at? When the application were to come across your desk, what exactly do you look at? Do you look, make sure they're registered in the City of Pasco, or do they live there? Like, do you actually look at the background?
I don't look at their background. That's for the subcommittee. I just make sure that they're eligible, and if it, I think the Planning Commission, you have to be a resident of the City of Pasco, so I make sure that they're a resident of the City of Pasco. There are a few boards and commissions, they can be outside of city limits, but that's usually far and few between, so...
In regards to, okay, I just asked because, I mean, I'll say it, when I first moved here, I applied like five times and never got an interview, and I felt like you guys probably felt sad for me after a while, so I was kind of like, I don't get it. Then other people kind of told me the same thing, that they applied and never got an interview, so I would just kind of figure out what exactly is the review process, but if that's just it, then I guess it probably was just the council at the time. You know, so I guess, when it comes to an incumbent, how many times can they be reappointed? Is it just forever as long as they want?
It's two times.
Just two times?
Yes, that they wouldn't have to go through the interview process if that was what was selected. I do want to go back to your last one. With that continuous application process, that's part of that inefficiency, I think we saw as well. You, we have applicants that will apply, but unfortunately, we don't get to that process. And so then we have three positions open, and we continue with that process. So I think that was part of, you know, you apply and six months later, it's, well, we need to get through this process. So that's where we're really trying to focus in, to make sure that we can put this out and applicants aren't just into some kind of cycle of what's going on. So that's, that's one of the reasons why we're bringing this forward.
Okay, so they would be reappointed two times, and essentially, do they term out, or would essentially, they'd have to go for another interview?
They'd have to go for another interview. So, yeah, if they get through and they want to continue on, the subcommittee has the choice to bring them in, to interview them, or allow them to go forward without an interview. After that second time, they would then have to come in for the interview at this point in time, that's how the resolution is.
I know this was, I don't think this was, this was part of the scope here. What's your guys' thoughts on some of these committees or boards just being like, we don't participate in them anymore? Would that be a city council decision, or? I'm speaking for myself with the Franklin County Law and Justice Committee, they don't meet, I mean, they haven't met since like the 90s, so I was like, why do we even have this? Like, I kind of, there's like no point to even really appoint a council member to it, I think.
Outside our scope, of course, but definitely something to bring forward as council to probably work with city manager.
Thank you, that's all my questions, thank you.
All right, well, thank you for that, Councilman Peralas, so we're going to go to Councilman Ross.
All right, just a question for clarification in regards to sliding, slide regarding proposed changes on the dates. Proposed change number three, so just again, just clarification, you have here arts and culture from January 2nd to July 1st. Civil service, February 18th, you're moving that back to January 1st or moving it forward to the following January 1st?
Correct, we'd have to work with legal to make sure that we don't step on any toes on, the Arts and Culture Commission was created by you all, but for civil service, I want to make sure that we have the legal parameters, so whether that has to be, I believe the RCW says it's a six-year term, I don't know that we can go backwards, so it might have to go forwards.
Okay, so that was just a clarification, not in regards to any of the commissions in particular, it's the dates. I see some are going back into January 1st from the dates that they have the current term start, so I'm assuming it'll be moving forward to January 1st or July 1st instead of going back.
If that's council's preference and there's no legal requirements behind it, that's, that's what we would be looking to do.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you. With that, I'm not seeing any other lights, so if we have anybody in the audience that would like to make a comment on this, one, twice, one, three times, all right. Well, with that, let's move on to 5D, which is the introduction to water conservation efforts, and again, we are going to go with Assistant City Manager Angela Fishon.
All right, so good evening again, Mayor and Council. So tonight's presentation's purpose is to provide an introduction to Pasco's water conservation efforts. Water conservation is not defined by a single program or initiative, it's a multifaceted strategy. So tonight, we'll provide a quick snapshot of where we're at, what initiatives are underway, and highlight opportunities for council discussion. So as Pasco continues to grow, we are placed under great pressure with our water supply, as I know all of you know. Water is a shared resource, so... Water is a shared resource, so our residents, our businesses, institutions, and the city must work together. Conservation depends on awareness and education. So for example, many may not realize the role of curb and gutters, which conserve water indirectly by preventing waste and protecting landscapes, or that a silent toilet leak can waste up to 300 gallons a day. So if you do that over a course of a year, it can fill up a backyard pool. So if you just think about that, and if you have three toilets in your home, how impactful that is. Additionally, tools and incentives, which we'll discuss them tonight, policies, and then intentional behavior change. So simply shutting off the faucet when you brush your teeth, or having an automatic shut-off nozzle on your lawn hose, all make a big difference. So over the past several years, Pasco's potable and irrigation water use has remained very stable, even with population growth. This reflects the success of current programs and community awareness. Looking ahead, sustaining this balance will require proactive investment and policy updates. So some current efforts underway, we've got boulevard standards, which we are looking to update. This is a collaborative effort between Community Economic Development, Parks and Recreation, Public Works, and the City Manager's Office to talk about the standards for boulevards, gateways, and corridors. Currently, the city maintains approximately 26 lineal miles, which require about $780,000 annually to maintain. So a lot of grass, a lot of cutting, weeding, and edging. This effort will be brought to council this fall to support current issues with standards and long-term maintenance, including the safety and costs, as well as discuss opportunities to reduce water consumption necessary to maintain current standards. So we're currently under contract with McCabe Spacito, and as I said, this is planned to come to council this fall for an introduction. The Comprehensive Water System Plan, the city takes a comprehensive approach to the water use efficiency by combining water system design, engineering operations, and community outreach and education. An update to this plan is underway and is anticipated to come to council for action in 2026. Within this plan, there's a six-year water use efficiency program, and the program will provide updates for establishing water-saving goals through a public process. So that'll be part of that update through Public Works. So Boulevard median conversion to zero scapeing, we are in the process of creating a bid to go out for certain areas of the city, and it's Burden Boulevard, Oregon Avenue, Convention, and Rodeo. These are those landscaping strips in the middle of the roadway. I have not seen our staff have to do this, but they have to ride lawn mowers up there, and then right in the middle of traffic, make sure that they edge and mow. So big safety concern, but also water. It takes a lot of water to maintain those. And then additionally, Parks and Recreation is working on the smart irrigation clock installation. So these are clocks that are controlled through like a central command. These clocks provide the ability to adjust the water percentage based on seasonal scheduling, so can program that in. With remaining funding, after these are installed, we're looking to also add some flow sensors where they're applicable, so it'll be dependent on each place, but that would recognize different zones and be able to either do an auto shut-off, or give some kind of alert when something isn't quite right. And then additionally, the city is really focused on new facilities that we're working on being zero scape. So I'm showing our three new fire stations here, and instead of having grass, making sure that we have that hardscaping has really been supportive of water conservation. Additionally, showing off some Public Works stuff here, our roundabouts have been hardscaped as well. So opportunities for expansion, we've all seen programs in other cities, and some of those include community watering scheduling. So Moses Lake has seen a lot of support for implementing a watering schedule. They started off with a voluntary, and then they kind of rolled out education as well. So they bring on a seasonal staff to be able to provide that education where people may be watering on days that they're not supposed to. Spokane has a residential efficiency checkup program, so they have staff who will come to your home, and whether that's check your irrigation, see if it's on the correct timers or they're set correctly. They can also check your interior home to see and identify if there's leaks happening. But again, that is staff-supported, so it's funded through city funds. We've talked about lawn conversion incentives before, and then one of the areas that we see repeatedly that makes a very large difference in water conservation efforts is irrigation metering. And so we have 10,000, approximately 10,000 customers in our irrigation, and those are not currently metered. I put up the approximate dollar amount, we believe that with staff time and installing of the meter itself, it's about $2,000 per account, which would equate to $20 million to retrofit. Very big price tag there, but when it comes to changing behavior, knowledge is power. And right now, we know how much we're outputting for irrigation, but we don't know who's using what, and there's no incentive for them necessarily to change what they're currently doing. We can expand current efforts, so in our city facilities and infrastructure, we can do more water use audits and retrofitting. We can continue the boulevard conversion to zero scapeing beyond the center medians. That will take funding as well. And then continuation of the smart water solutions in our parks. And sorry, going back to that irrigation metering, you know, we need to first meter, well, sorry, we need to, if council wants to consider this, it would be an opportunity to change current standards so that as new homes are put in, that we can be caught up and not have to retrofit those. So a phased approach is what's recommended there.
Okay.
Summary, Pasco has a strong foundation for water conservation. Continued growth requires intentional action and investment. Council input is critical to shaping the policies, programs, and funding strategies. So staff seeks council discussion and direction on near-term and long-term strategies, guidance on new policies you would like us to consider, and an appetite for a phased irrigation metering investment. And this is multifaceted, so, you know, if you ask a question, I may have to pitch it to Deputy City Manager or Public Works Director, and then if it's Parks and Recreation, I may have to come back to you if I don't have that information tonight.
All right, well, thank you for that good presentation. We'll start off with Mayor Portemgrim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Bouchon. That was, I guess, yeah, thank you, and I'd like to thank Councilman Peralis too, because he has his relentless advocacy of zero scapeing and water conservation, and for you and the rest of staff for really bringing this back to us. And I know sometimes we feel once in a while that, you know, some of our goals and objectives aren't being prioritized in the way we necessarily would like, but I think this is a really good example of something that, and it's worth noting, being brought back to us, something we've requested, so I'm really grateful for this. And, you know, and it's easy for us to think, being in the Pacific Northwest and having the Columbia River just flow right on by, that water's not an issue, but, oh boy, you know, especially with our conversation we had last year as far as water rights, and just how much, you know, more this is becoming a precious resource all the time. And so there is a lot to digest there and a lot to comprehend. I guess some of the things right off the bat that stuck out to me or stood out to me were the residential efficiency checkups. And would those be by their request, or are we just gonna mosey our way onto their property and tell them it's time to audit? What was the dream there?
Definitely not to mosey onto their property. No, how Spokane does it is you actually schedule time. So you go to their website, and you can schedule a time that works for you as well as staff. And generally, I think it's like a 30-minute check, but no, we would not, we would not be just knocking on doors.
Just, it's good to clarify, thank you. And I think that would be a really good way, because I think there are some people who would be interested, and, you know, especially if we were to go to some kind of irrigation metering to make sure that they aren't just dumping water down the drain, or their money down the drain, for, please pardon the pun, but, you know, and I think just the irrigation metering, I mean, a couple of my early thoughts would be, how many other jurisdictions do this? You know, being metered for not only just the potable water, but the irrigation and just the flow rate, and obviously, it's a huge upfront investment, but, you know, what's our return on the investment for the community? How long is it gonna take us to make that back? Is it, I imagine it would, people get socked with a big bill, they're, people are gonna react to that in one way or the other, but I, you know, I think at some point, people do have to pay for what they use rather than a flat rate, so I totally understand this kind of idea coming up, and just kinda curious to see as we flush this out, where all this goes, but thank you again for bringing this back to us.
Well, thank you for that, Mayor Portemgrim. Let's head on over to Councilman Peralis.
Thank you, mayor. Yeah, no, it was a great presentation, it was a great, it was a great read, I appreciate all the hard work that's gone into it. I think if you're looking for direction, for me, my suggestion would be finalize or present the boulevard landscaping standards, which is kind of on its way. Then I would say, bring forward a proposal for new irrigation accounts to acquire meters. I think that would be more of a short-term goal, and then perhaps look into developing draft incentives for lawn conversions. I know a lot of people, especially in my district, are already doing it. I mean, I see a lot of lawns that just have a little strip in the middle, and then just all kind of drop resistant stuff. So, you know, we have a lot of individuals who are being considerate of our environment. I did see lots of people watering their lawns yesterday at 3:00 in the afternoon, 100 degrees, and then just, I don't get it. So I think education should obviously, obviously be a really big piece of this. I mean, I can send an email, kind of my thoughts, I don't know how much more in-depth you want us to give you, if you guys want us to give you direct direction with everything you talked about tonight, or just kinda do it in piecemeal, but since I am talking, I'll go ahead and just say, like, maybe in 2026, start looking at the cost and funding options for irrigation metering in regards to the retrofits, to kind of space out your guys' focus and stuff. And maybe talk about education and community watering and schedule outreach kind of campaign to talk about something like I just talked about. And then looking up to the, yeah, and then lastly, looking at the conservation upgrades for our current facilities, and then that would kind of segue into the water conservation elements and our CWSP update that we're looking to do. So those would be my suggestions. I'll kind of follow up with the email, but, you know, this is a big topic, it's long gonna become bigger, and I'm glad you looked at places like Moses Lake. Moses Lake has had, they have a lot of water issues down there, so I'm glad you're kind of looking at different places who are needing to implement stuff, because the water is becoming really scarce, so really appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you for that, Councilman Peralis. We're gonna go to Councilwoman Brass.
Thank you. Couple questions. I know former Mayor Matt Watkins had talked about zero scapeing for a couple of years. Then Ruben Alvarado, former Councilman Ruben Alvarado also brought up the situation about zero scapeing and gave examples about when he lived in LA and how water was timed, when it was best to water your yard and stuff like that. And then former Councilman Craig Maloney also talked about zero scapeing, and we discussed potential incentives. I'm curious to hear or see what programs, incentive programs are out there, or can be created for the new development to have metered water, or some type of incentive for zero scapeing for the new development, and for those individuals that wish to implement some type of zero scapeing within their older homes. My house is a 1956 house. I would love to find out what we can do. And as far as leak detention support, Ms. Sarah, your department was very good in helping me detect and figure out where there was a leak in my house. The only way I found out there was a leak was because I got an $800 water bill, when I usually get 100, 120, 150 max. But $800 is a huge leak that your department helped me figure out where it was. So I know there's already some type of support within the department, and I would encourage, you know, monitoring these accounts or some type of support for the residents. So again, I'm curious to figure out how we can create incentives or develop a program from the previous councils' conversations. I mean, I've only been here about eight years, almost eight years, but I know it's been a conversation in councils' past. So let's figure out what we can do, because water, I wouldn't say waste of water, but I would say the use of water is a little too free. I know myself, I have a huge tree that I wish was smaller, but it provides beautiful shade. So we need to figure out what we can do, especially for those individuals that do wish to develop some type of zero scapeing for their homes. Thanks.
Thank you for that, Councilwoman Brass. I will say, I had an issue where, also saw like a large water bill for one of my renters, and he asked me to look into it, and I called, and the city of Pasco had actually gone out and did an audit on it, because they were shocked when it was, you know, like $200 every month, and all of a sudden, boom, $800. So I will say, I was glad that when I called, they had already done a follow-up, and then I went out there, and sure enough, the guy's, his water hose was leaking, and it was just crazy that that, in a month, could have caused that humongous of a difference, but it was leaking all day long, because he just had the faucet on and then a nozzle on the water, so it was just nonstop running, and it's like, well, you are wasting a ton of water. So anyway, glad to see your department is doing a great job. My question was, like, citywide, and I actually hate the faucets where you like have your hand and turn it on, but how much, I realize that is saving water, how much of our city actually is on that kind of thing where it's motion censored, so if nothing is in front, the water actually turns off, versus somebody turning the nozzle on and then leaving and thinking it's funny?
You're looking at me, you think I would have an answer? I don't. That's a great question. So I can check in with facilities to see if we have that information, but I can say that as we're going through and doing retrofitting, those are the kind of components that are going into place, but I can check in with our cartograph system to see if that's something we can pull.
Okay, I'd just be curious, because it seemed like that would be the number one thing, having all faucets that are city-owned, just because, you know, when I was coaching, you go into the bathroom at the park, at Highland Park, and somebody, some kid thought it was funny, used to have the water full blast when he left, and then you go and turn it off. So it does make sense, even though it's frustrating, you think it's things to turn on. But anyway, I'm not seeing any other lights. My thoughts also were in line with Councilman Peralis as far as direction to city. I'm sure if anybody else has any other ideas, please contact city staff and go from there. And anybody in the audience, anybody have a question? Oh, we got somebody, so thank you, yep. Please come up to the podium and say your name and where you're from.
My name is Kara Calver, I am from Pasco. Good evening, mayor and council members. Welcome to the city of Pasco, our new city manager. My name's Kara Calver, I am the District Manager of the Franklin Conservation District. So this excited me when I saw this on the agenda today, and I thought I would come and share a few words with you. We are a local government agency overseen by a five-member Board of Supervisors. I presented to the council back in February, not sure if you remember my presentation. I just wanted to remind the council of the things that the Conservation District provides, and this presentation was really great to see. As you know, Pasco is growing rapidly, and with the growth comes increased pressure on our most critical resource, water, also known as blue gold, right? The city's water conservation efforts are admirable and timely, and would benefit even more so by a collaboration and partnership with the Franklin Conservation District. For over 70 years, we've provided technical District. For over 70 years, we've provided technical assistance, education, and financial resources for Franklin, across Franklin County, including the City of Pasco residents up until 2001. Our Drain Ranger and Wheat Week education program bring hands-on water conservation education into the classroom. We educate kids K through 5. We have in the City of Pasco for the last 20 years without a dime. We used to hand out water conservation kits, whole house water conservation kits with the help of the City of Pasco's public works to all the students that we taught. And so they would go home. And so they'd have those tools to gauge how much water they were potentially wasting in their homes. These programs directly help the city address outreach that are required as part of their Quad City Water Right and through their NPDES permits for stormwater runoff. Through the Franklin County Water Conservancy Board, of which the Franklin Conservation District oversees, we help process water rights, transfers, and changes, something Pasco has relied on many times. And our Heritage Garden Program, it helps homeowners create water-wise native plant landscapes. It's zero scapeing, but just a little twist on it. It includes some heritage components, some cultural relevant things to the Columbia Basin. In fact, there's already a waiting list of our Heritage Garden Program in the City of Pasco. We cannot provide services right now because you guys are not part of our service area. I've seen the lawn conversion incentives in the City of Spokane. It got me excited about seven years ago. Might not have been that long, maybe five years ago. I remember emailing our past Mayor Esrano and saying, hey, we need to do something like that in the City of Pasco. Because just like Councilman Peralas was saying, there are people that want to do this, and they want to do it now. They want to, they see that we're like Arizona, we're like New Mexico. We need to start conserving our water and not be living with lush lawns everywhere. I've also had to notify recently the teachers and students in the City of Pasco that we're not going to be providing our salmon in the classroom program this year. We don't have funding for it. We had a funding cut. And I was here back in February to ask you guys to annex back into the Conservation District so that we could receive the rates and charges from the City of Pasco. It's very minor rates and charges, but for every dollar of local funding, we can, we can match that with about $20 in grant funding. We're almost totally grant-funded. So by becoming part of our district, Pasco residents would unlock full access to these services and more. And because the district leverages every local dollar, it makes your dollars go farther. Annexation would allow us to bring significant outside investment back into Pasco neighborhoods, schools, and landscapes. This truly is a win-win. The city gains a strong partner with decades of conservation expertise, and the district gains the opportunity to expand services where they're needed most, right here in Pasco. Together, we can ensure a sustainable water future for generations to come. Thank you for considering this important partnership.
All right. Well, thank you. Appreciate your comments. So anybody else would like to comment on this? Going once, going twice, going three times. All right. Let's move on to 5E, which is ordinance amending PMC Section 5.05.170 exemptions related to business license. And we're going to move on to the Richard Sidell Show for the next three items. So let's see what you got here.
Yes, quite a few exciting things, I hope. The first topic is a little bit of a revision to our business license program. And this one is mandated by the State of Washington. As a way of history, we run our business license program through the State of Washington, through their BLS program, Business Licensing Services. This has been a huge help for the business community within the City of Pasco and the businesses that do business in the City of Pasco, if they're outside, from outside the city. And the reason for that is, in the past, they used to have to, number one, know that we have a business license program that they need to comply with. Number two, need to come to the city hall and sign up and pay for it, which really meant that there was a lot of businesses doing business within the city, but not actually had a business license. This adoption with BLS program made it much easier for them to select the City of Pasco as one of the places that they're doing business. They're making payments in one place if they're doing businesses in multiple different cities. And with that, we've significantly increased our, the number of businesses that are actually licensed with the city because we've made it easier. But with that, there's some requirements, surprisingly, actually a lot fewer than I would have expected, requirements from the State of Washington. And one of them is essentially that for businesses that are making less than $2,000 in revenue and are from outside of your city, that they're exempt from business licensing requirement. They've now increased that threshold to 4,000, which the city has to comply with. So we need to change our ordinance. But we're also recommending to council that we extend that same exemption to the businesses that have the brick and mortar within the city as well. However, the exception would be that if the, if the brick and mortar meets the threshold of our fire safety as being moderate or high, that we still have that requirement for the fire inspection. So that's, that's the only change council can choose to exclude that if you want to. But that's the recommendation from staff, that we make it easier for the businesses that reside within the City of Pasco as well. However, there is a risk if they're doing some things that are higher risk that need to be inspected, that we still require for them to be inspected and ensure safety of not just them, but everybody else around them as well. And with that, I'm open to any more questions that you might have.
All right. Well, thank you for that. Those are words from heaven to hear that trying to make things easier for the brick and mortar businesses in the City of Pasco. I know Mayor Potemgrim and myself love to hear those sweet words. So with that, is anybody on, council members have any comments or questions? I'm not seeing anything. Anybody from the audience? Like to make a comment, once, twice, three times a charm. All right. So let's move on to number F, Division of Special Events Permits Program. Take it away.
I think you're going to like this even more. I do have my partner from Framework Hope Free online as well. And one of the things that we've been hearing, and if council, council has been talking about this and asking staff to address this issue, we've also heard from community quite a bit. And this is something that comes up in almost every community listening sessions that we do on a biennial basis, is how do we make city more vibrant? How do we take the red tape out, especially when we're trying to celebrate something? And so we have been working with Framework to audit our program overall. We're utilizing the funds left from ARPA program. And they helped do our downtown master plan. And we've had a contract with them to work on the implementation of some of those programs, which is very exciting, because many times you have a master plan and then nothing happens with it. Just looks nice in a shelf. So we're working on the implementation program. Some of the work that they've done is mobile vending. They helped us with getting grant for lights. So that's something that Assistant City Manager Pashon and Parks and Rec Director Rice are working on. And you should be seeing that sometime in fall. Some lights in downtown, which I know some of you in council have been wanting that for a very long time. I remember specifically a trip to Denver with Mayor and imagining similar scenario or environment here in Pasco. Today's topic is very specific to special events permit. And our goal essentially is to remove barriers and also at the same time, improve city processes. We've talked about lean processes as a part of our budget process. And the idea is, there's a lot of work. And how do we reduce less value-added work and spend that time doing things that are more value-added for our residents? We would like to see more events happening in downtown and in Pasco in general, highlight our local arts and culture and economic development. So those are the goals of this audit overall. What Framework has done is look at all of the code that relates to special events permit. And then they've gone out and done interviews with many departments within the city and also some of our partners. And we've also fed them some of the feedback from our residents and our business owners. And what were the issues that they went through while they were going through our special events permit as well? We're here today to get your feedback. This is really in, we're essentially interviewing you at this point, to ask you what you would like for us to consider. And then at the end of it, or the next step would be to work on those code updates based on, based on the feedback, and then bring it back and ordinance for council approval.
All right. Well, thank you for that.
I still have a lot more to go.
Okay, keep on going. I had that long pause.
I will move fast.
There was Mayor Potemgrim hitting the button.
I know this is a very exciting topic, and you all have been waiting very patiently for it. Some of the things that we've been talking about is really, what's the threshold? As in, how many people are going to be there? Really, what is your risk driver? What is the type of event? Because that really matters too on whether you want a special event permit or not. And what is the feasibility? And so there's a lot of things that we're kind of looking at overall and saying, is this really important to do? Is there a specific risk that we're trying to mitigate here? And also being clear to the applicants on what the requirements are. There are some examples here that we liked. Kennewick, it's all, you know, how many people, what kind of things are you doing? Are you wanting exclusive use of the park or a public space? And then there's Seattle, that is dividing it between private property and public property. And within private property, it's focusing on specific things like amplified sound after hours, let's say. And, and any impact to the neighborhood. Also, for public property, they're looking at use of alcohol, use, need for public resources, things like that. What we're recommending is that we divide something with public and private property. I think that that provides a lot more clarity to people of, okay, it's my house, and I would like to do something different than what I usually do in my house. What does that mean? Or maybe it's my business. And essentially, if you're doing an event that is outside of your scope of occupancy. So for example, if your number of people that you can have within your business is 150 people, but you will be inviting 250. And so maybe that is when we require a special events permit. Again, sound, sound is always an impact to neighbors. So is that something, if you're doing something after, late into the night, and it's loud noise, how do we, do we want to have special events processed into that? And, and figure out how we can mitigate it, be it just notification. If somebody's just doing one thing that one year, one night a year, then maybe we require them to notify the neighbors so that they're aware. Those kinds of things of what can be mitigation of amplified sound. For public property, I think anytime you're expecting 100-plus people, but you're, you know, they're asking for exclusive use of space, there's alcohol, or somebody is selling tickets to an event that is happening in a public space, those kinds of things, we require a special events permit. These are all many different event types that we have. And the ones highlighted in blue are sale events. And so this does create a lot of confusion among applicants. And so what we would like to do is actually, if council is open to it, remove yard sale permit overall. The reason, currently, we only allow two yard sale permits a year. And part of that is to ensure that nobody's, you know, making their driveway a 24/7/365 store. But that can be managed via code enforcement, if there's a code enforcement complaint. So we don't really see a value in issuing a permit at this time. But there's also auction sales and sidewalk sales, temporary sales events, that feel very similar. So we would like to see how they can fit into a more streamlined category of events. And so maybe we do have, instead of Hope's example or idea was, instead of sidewalk sale, maybe we move that to mobile vending. And so that makes more sense. People can understand that concept. So we're recommending that we, rummage sale, what does that exactly mean versus a yard sale? So there's a lot of things within our code that just requires a little bit more cleanup, not to confuse people. Same with some of our events as well, concerts and outdoor.
If I could interrupt you for a second?
Yes, absolutely.
Just a quick question for clarification. Thank you. You have yard sales on here. Yes, there's two yard sales per year per household, ideally. But we know that there's a lot of people that don't go through the process. Now, say I want to do a yard sale or rummage sale in a church parking lot. That's a public venue. That's not my property. But I still require, be required to provide a permit?
The church itself would be a business, which would be a private entity. So when we say public versus private, public would be the city's property, essentially, the right of ways, the parks, things like that. But the church, we would not require a special events permit unless there are, we can get into that with mobile vending, and what kind of requirements come within mobile vending. If you're trying to do it for one Saturday afternoon, that becomes one issue, versus if you're doing it for a week or two weeks, those kinds of things.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for that. I know, since we're on the yard sale, I'll chime in. My wife and myself used to go to yard sales years ago. After a while, you get enough stuff, you don't want to go to yard sales anymore. But I will say that, you know, the two, I always thought it was kind of dumb, because usually if they do it more than that, if you go to a yard sale once, you're not, if you see them have another yard sale, you drive on by, you're like, I've been there, done that. So it kind of seems kind of dumb. And eventually, the people give up because they're not selling nothing. They're wasting their day. So I would be definitely for getting rid of it because it just, again, it seems kind of, people are smart. If you have a yard sale week after week, and nobody's ever shown up, or very few people, you are wasting your time. So I'd love to see that, that gone. And then again, yeah, if code enforcement has a problem with somebody doing it all the time. Yeah, go from there. I just chiming in my two little cents on that. But please go on.
And I think Councilwoman Sidell has a question.
We have, I guess it's going to be a topic. So, yeah.
I just have one question regarding the flea market. Because I recently went out to the flea market. I was pretty impressed by the amount of vendors out there and the amount of food vendors that were out there. But you don't hear too many, I guess, the regulations? Or do they have regulations? And I'm assuming that the fire department goes out to make sure that everyone's in line with code. So I guess, can you elaborate a little bit on why the flea market would be eliminated from that? And what, I guess, are regulations on that are?
We would not eliminate flea market because they are essentially a store. They have a storefront. They have a structure. There are events venue, for lack of better words. So we do have two very specific facilities that kind of comes to mind, flea market and Hapo Center. And with flea market, we do require special events permit. But what we do is an umbrella permit with them. And so for their regular business, regular standard business, they have an umbrella permit, and they're able to do their business during their season every year. And anything outside of that permit, if they want to do an event that is not included within that, they do get another special events permit that is specific for that event. So they do have the rules and regulations, and we would continue with that in this scenario as well, if we change it. However, overall, you're kind of looking at, I'm just going to go to the end of it, but our, our recommendation is that we really look at, I guess I do not have that. I apologize. Our recommendation is that we truly look at, what are the risk factors? So if you have a flea market and you have traffic control, and you have exits, and you have all of the safety, I'm assuming, fire. have all of the safety, I'm, I'm assuming fire extinguishers and things like that. If, if that exists, do we require them to get a special events permit for every business that is there? And we do not do that right now, we have an umbrella permit. But we're trying to use that good example and apply that in some other places as well, like the Hapo Center where essentially most of their events require a special events permit at this time.
Okay, one more question. Not changing the subject, or not changing the subject, but so in the last week or two, I noticed that in Peanuts Park, they've been having church service pretty late at night. And I'm assuming that they need to get a permit for that, or I'm assuming that they've required permits for that. But out of curiosity, my questions would be, where would the church services fall under if it's in a public venue like Peanuts Park? Or also, like the homeless, when we do, or clean sweep comes to mind, but they will set up in Peanuts Park and feed the homeless? Or I believe they do Christmas Eve, they do a big event during that? Where would that fall under these?
That would be any regular, I'm just looking through here on where they might fall.
I think so, when we, we've looked at the different examples, a lot of cities will have thresholds. And so if it's under a certain number of people, you don't need a permit. So I don't know how large the church services are, but it's possible that you, you can, if you want, you could set a threshold. And so if there were, say, under 30 people or under 50, you know, Kennewick, I think it's under 100, you don't need a permit to do that. So the, the goal being that there could be more regular use of Peanuts Park to keep it safer and, you know, more active.
Thank you.
All right, so let's move. Okay, I guess we're going to wait, so please carry on.
So as Hope mentioned, there, there's a lot of cleanup that is needed here. And so if we try to correlate, the reason that we didn't go into history is if we try to correlate to what we do, to what we're recommending, it gets really messy. And so what we're saying is, let's look at the, the risk drivers of when there's a lot of people, when there's alcohol involved, or people are trying to use a public space and sell tickets, let's say, and do an event, then that becomes a high risk activity or maybe even an illegal activity because, or not, not illegal, but undesirable activity. And so we're trying to figure out how we can reduce regulations while still trying to control some of those risk factors. So there's a lot in our code that is, some of it is outdated, some of it is confusing. Like for example, we have defined dance halls and flea markets as, as event types as well, but they're spaces. And we permit those particular spaces, so they really should be in zoning. And when we actually permit those spaces, they're not events in themselves unless they're happening out in a public space, in a public park, and they're doing, just dancing out in the public park, selling tickets and they have more than 100, 100 people, 100, 100 attendees. So you're kind of getting into those nuances that our code right now is quite unclear on. There's also demands for public resource as well. So there are some events that will require road closure, that will require electricity that, you know, is just out there in the park. And so those would also require special events permit because there's coordination that needs to happen with the city. We need to mitigate those risks and impacts to other people who use that, either that resource or, or the right of way, things like that. We just talked about the Hapo Center and the flea market. Essentially, the flea market is under a master permit. And like I mentioned earlier, any variation to that master permit, they, they get a, a special events permit. So if they want to do something different, a different event, we want to extend that similar permit type to Hapo Center as well because right now, they are code and code exempt, but then all of the asterisks that come with the event types that are not exempt, essentially almost all of their events, they have to get a special events permit. So that's kind of operationally how it works. And so what we can do is create something very similar with a roster of events and different types of events that they can expect. We can outline what our expectations are in terms, in terms of traffic control, exits, security, things like that. And then if they bring in any different type of event that is not listed in that master permit, then they would have to come in and get a special events permit. So, so that's a, a recommendation to help make it easier, but also mitigate the, the risk of, especially from Hapo Center, we hear a lot about traffic and sometimes security as well. The other area that we've talked, we've talked about that creates a lot of issues for our applicants is security. Right now, the way that our code is written, it requires one per 100 attendees, which for many events makes it extremely expensive. And more importantly, not all events require this level of security. Sometimes you can't even find that many security guards in this region to be able to staff that facility. So our recommendation is that instead of just doing one to 100, our police department created a nice rubric that aligns with risk factors like how many people you have, what's the density of the, of the facility, of the event? Is there alcohol involved? What's their history? If there's a history? What's even the time of the event? If it's happening late at night, sometimes that adds a certain level of risk factor. And so you would have a rubric that would come with a certain score that gives you a low, moderate, high level of risk. And then if it's high, then yes, you do need to find those security guards. But if it's low, then probably your ushers and your staff, your catering staff might do, just having somebody to monitor a few things. And we really believe that this is going to be a great help for some of the larger events because it is challenging for those event organizers to even find the security people to be able to staff it. And in many cases, those might not be needed. And there are ones where they are needed and we can focus on ensuring that those events are properly staffed. I apologize, this is a lot. Our special events permit is all over in our code. And we appreciate your patience as we're kind of working through it. But at this time, we're looking at kind of the high level, what your thoughts are, what you think we're missing in terms of what we need to look at moving forward. But overall, we're looking at really, what is the risk driver? Where is it happening? And, and how can we mitigate those things? If it's happening in public, it is definitely our responsibility to ensure that somebody's just not popping up a tent in the, in the middle of the, you know, park and inviting 200 people and, you know, that's it. Or alcohol use as well, which is something that council had asked for us to look into. This would basically say, if, if there's alcohol involved in a public space, then you need a public or a special events permit. So those are kind of our recommendations. Also, security being a little bit more, looking at a lot more factors than just the number of bodies. And then just looking at our code and streamlining it so that a, a layperson can actually understand what we're trying to say.
All right, I do appreciate that. I will say I applied for a special use permit here a couple of weeks ago. The Retro Riders want to have an antique bike show in my parking lot because the other venue got kind of shut down. The owner died, so that kind of shut that down. But I was kind of surprised on how I'd keep going back and forth and still now back at my insurance company. I thought this would be really easy. And you go back and forth, and of course, you pay the money for the insurance, and then the city says that's not enough, you got to go back where you're thinking, wow, this is really a pain in the rear, especially when you get basically 60 to 70 old men looking at antique bikes from the 30s, 40s and 50s. Is it really worth it? So I'd love to see the, the 100 on down where you don't have to do all this. Obviously, I'd still want to have the insurance permit, but it would be so much easier if I didn't have to keep going back and forth and then having people call me, want to know if it's done, if they should start advertising, whatever, especially considering there's no alcohol, there's nothing being sold, it's donation only, and it's just looking at antique bikes. So again, anything we could do to make this streamlined for people like me who are very busy and I don't have time to be sitting down in City Hall, we appreciate it. And again, I love the idea of 100 or less where you, on a private property, if I got that right, you don't have to have a special permit? Would that be?
That is correct. If it's a private property. Now, if it's a public property, like a park, you wanted to do that in a park and you wanted exclusive use of that park at that time, you would still need to do it.
Yeah.
But if it's a private place and you, it's, it meets the, the permit of, of that particular space, then yes, you would not have to do anything.
No, a park, I totally understand, 100%. But yeah, just be nice if I could just do it, try to help out some nonprofits and then move on with my day versus having to keep babysitting this. But those are my two thoughts. I'd like to go on to Mayor Protim Grim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for bringing this to us. I mean, there, I took a lot of notes there, is a lot. I mean, because this really, I mean, some of this comes down to what our atmosphere of our city is, what the identity of our city is, and you know, even almost core values and that kind of stuff. I mean, when you really break some of these things down super deep, it, you know, how does this, how do some of these things reflect upon the city? And yeah, the more I dug in, the deeper that hole got. But back to yard sales, yes, thank you. You are speaking my language there, checks all the boxes, you know, gone. And it's almost rhetorical for me to even ask it in this way, but how many people even ask for a yard sale permit?
It's really surprising, but quite a few. I do not know the exact number. I had asked this question maybe in 2020. And there's a lot of people who want to follow the rules begrudgingly. They're not happy about having to do it, but they do actually follow, follow the, the law.
No, and I appreciate that. I guess more my, my comment was how many people even think they have to have a permit? That's kind of almost where I was going with it. Yeah, there's always going to be the, you know, but I, it just made me wonder how many people actually even realize they have to get a permit and, yeah. So I, yeah, I would love to, to see that going. I think your, your thinking and the rest of staff's thinking is just excellent to, you know, Mr. Hendren, help us out. But yeah, keep that policed within the code enforcement, would really appreciate it. You know, our system does seem a little cumbersome and like the, the mayor was saying, and it, you know, some of the, the special permits, we've, we found out with that alcohol permit in Memorial Park recently, that seemed a little cumbersome having to come all the way to the council. And so I really didn't see it in your notes here, but I was kind of wondering if you were hoping that as this gets filled out, because in my mind, some of this does fall more within the executive branch that, you know, we all work on this together and then as far as the day-to-day running of it. I mean, that makes more sense to me, but at the same time, I am scared, I wrote, about what we may not be able to anticipate that might bring the ire to the residents, that we just, you know, kind of give the green light on this stuff and all of a sudden, I mean, safety was brought up several times, but just even risk factors, I think about nuisance too, that I could just see the city, just what have you guys done to us? And so I think that's where we would really be hoping that staff, that you guys predict and protect us from, you know, what we may not be able to anticipate. And hopefully in the crafting of all this, you know, put, put it in a way that you might be able to foresee what might be unforeseen to us. And what I say that some of the loopholes we may not be able to anticipate. Also, I would love to see a better sampling of thresholds rather than Seattle and Ellensburg up there. I'd love, I noticed you had Kennewick up there, but I'd love to see what Richland and West Richland are doing also. You know, I, I can't possibly imagine a threshold I would want to base off what Seattle's doing. But at the same time, I think how they separate between public and private property is really helpful. And, and it sounds like that was kind of the direction you were leaning, and I think that's a great idea also. Another thing that really didn't get brought up into this, I noticed too, I mean, a little bit within demonstrations, but just some of these First Amendment, you know, peaceful protests, some of these are just kind of happening spur of the moment online. And, you know, I see our deputy chief back here and I think they've done a great job of, you know, assessing officer safety versus somebody just not having a permit for a large group to gather. But I, I think as we go through these things, we need to continue thinking about, you know, can ambulances still get through, you know? Are we going to be able, if somebody's having a heart attack down the road, are we going to be able to help that person even though here's maybe a unpermitted demonstration going on? And so, yeah, some of this really gets, gets deep the more I thought about it. So, yeah, tho- those are kind of just the things that were on my mind as you presented, Ms. Sigdel, and just risk factors and nuisances. You brought that, you brought up risk factors a lot. And, you know, I think risk factors to the neighbor, the neighbors, the neighborhood, and of course, the liability to the city, but also just the nuisance. You know, we talked about loud music on, on private property after hours and like you well said, that is, you know, a big complaint to people. And so, yeah, hopefully we all have lots of thoughts and that, kind of like the, the water ordinance and everything, that we can really work this through and, you know, not spend more time that's needed, but just really process and get this to, to be something that works really good for our city and just kind of protects the image of the city, but yet cuts the cumbersome red tape and bureaucracy at the same time and allows people to enjoy their city, you know? It is their city and just to be able to enjoy that. So that's my initial thoughts. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Well, thank you, Mayor Protim Grim.
I can speak to the city of Richland thresholds. I sampled many cities and tried to put forth examples that had really clear thresholds. The goal being, so a lot of cities, what, what they'll say is that they want to avoid impacts to infrastructure, which I think is what we're trying to do, but I wanted to have specifically examples that have really clear thresholds. So I could tell you the city of Richland doesn't have specific thresholds, they just offer permits for specific types of events.
All right, well, thank you for that clarification. We're going to move on to Councilman Peralos.
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry, I haven't talked for a little bit. Yeah, that's what I was going to say. This is actually kind of a timely issue. I've been talking with somebody who wants to update a commercial space here in Pasco and he was, actually he gave me a flyer about an event they had over in Richland. He says, they didn't have to go even go get a permit, it's on their private property. City said, yep, you're good, do your thing. So that would be kind of the route. I would like CSGO perhaps, but I, I would definitely entertain some recommendations in regards, I, I, in regards to this, I would lean more towards impact, so impact to infrastructure, public services. I, I wouldn't just do a blanket 100 or more people. I actually looked that up, I think, I couldn't really find a justification for 100, a lot of people just use it. A lot of cities use it just because it's a good round number. I'm sure there's some data on it somewhere, but I really couldn't find too much on it. I'm for removing the yard sale permitting, I think that, that's good. Yeah, I think really it comes down to doing a couple of those code cleanup things. I, I do hear something in regards to noise, I, I think, and maybe look into, I think this, this issue touches a lot of things, so noise ordinance update. I know myself and other people have came to council, talked about this. I think if we're going to kind of revamp all this, I think we need to look at the noise ordinance because you're saying want to have events, but believe me, there's going to be lots of people who don't want to hear that noise, hear that, you know, those bans and, and all that stuff. And so where's the balance between their interests and stuff? And so I think we're touching a couple of things here. I like the intent of a lot of this stuff. And one thing that always bothered me was that one security guard for every 100, never understood that. I mean, we have like two officers for every thousand people, but yet we have an event in Peanuts Park, 20 security guards walking around at a farmer's market. Not 20, but still, there's a lot of them for kind of no reason. I, I would like to see that number kind of up more. So if you're looking for a recommendation for that, maybe two for every 500 people? You know, I, you know, I, I maybe do some local research on that one, but I think we should be more for impact in regards to this stuff and really think through this, through this, through this update. And it looks like you talked to Hapo Center. this update, and it looks like you talked to Hapo Center, um, PD, Fire Department, did we talk to actually anyone, past people who have had events, like at Peanuts Park, did we go through that list, and just see, or other events, like maybe talk to Pride, talk to them and see, okay, what would you guys like to see, or what could change? I would think getting um, some updates from, or some feedback from the people who actually um, having events would, would be, be a little bit more beneficial, and so I'm not looking to really give my two cents on this tonight, I wanna hear the presentation, cause obviously there's always, you guys always give good presentations, wanna hear the information, and then um, I was kinda letting my stuff and driven drabs, like, okay, I kinda see it this way, and then, so I hope, I hope we're not looking for like direct direction tonight, but um, I think in the future, um, I, I think, I speak for myself, I guess, I would like to give my two cents on certain things what you're asking about, but I'm not looking to do it today.
Yeah, absolutely, um, just for clarification, for security, we're actually trying to, we're recommending that we move away from that, one to one hundred, and rather look at the event and what type of event it is, and then create a, a, a risk level, or attach a risk level to it, that then adds how many um, security guards per attendees would you require?
Yeah, oh yeah, I, I gra- I gathered that, so like, for me, like, the farmer's market, does it really need security? Probably not, I don't see too many garners getting in fights down there, but uh, other events down there, seeing what I'm, I can kinda see that, but yeah, no, I, I would totally agree with that, and that's, that's what I kinda thought about your intent was, thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilman Peralos, we're gonna go to Councilwoman Blaisdale.
Thank you, um, I have, and Councilwoman Brahas, remind me if I'm wrong, but a couple, I wanna say like a year ago, we had a community outreach, and someone talked about block parties, I don't know, and they had um, like a cul-de-sac, and they wanted to have a party, and it ended up not happening because they had, it was a certain amount of people per, I wanna say twenty-five per yard, or per household, do you remember what I'm talking about?
Actually, I, I do remember, I don't remember all the details, but I was gonna bring that up to you, to use that as an example, but thank you for bringing that up, she has more details.
I, I do, I do remember that specific example during uh, the community listening session, um, and definitely has been on staff's mind, um, because we do want people to have block party, um, and this would be, uh, we need to kinda get into the finer details of things, but uh, depending on council's direction, uh, we, basically that would be a private event, so unless they're asking for us to close the cul-de-sac completely, then probably a special events permit would not be required.
And I think that's what, they wanted to close the cul-de-sac, and that was the problem.
That was the situation, there was a, a request to close down a section of the cul-de-sac, cul-de-sac, which actually also closed down a section of the um, incoming traffic.
Yes.
And so one of the arterial streets to that section, um, there was safety uh, concerns, there was in case of an emergency, there would be no access, and several other uh, situation there, it, it was a complicated one. Um, I'm assuming the event did follow through after several changes?
Uh, I'm, I do not remember that, I believe.
I don't think it, I don't think it ever happened, because there was so many concerns, but I think that would be a good example to um, build off of, and then I have one other um, example that comes to mind, and I'm gonna call him out, because I think they've mastered um, in downtown, is Chow. Suzanne has held, I don't know, ten, fifteen events in the alley, and I've gone to numerous ones, um, she approximately has forty to fifty people, they serve alcohol, she does a wonderful job of, I guess, containing the alley and making sure that um, it's very well regulated, and I think that's a good example to kinda build off of, and she's done it so many times that it's probably really easy for her to submit her special events permit, and she'd probably do it with her eyes closed, honestly, but I think that she's done such a good job at planning and mastering it, that that is something that we need to, I guess, look at um, and build off of as well.
If I could add to that comment, um, Suzanne has been successful making sure that there's security, and she works along with code enforcement to make sure everything on her items, on her list, is, is checked off according to code enforcement, so I would encourage individuals, if you have a question, if you have a concern about the process, Mr. Milne, um, reach out to code enforcement, they're, I would say they're your best friend, to make sure that you have a successful and well organized event.
Thank you for that tidbit of advice, I just wanna, we'll hook hit some bikes and help the good guys uh, run a good operation without having to spend uh, an hour or two talking back and forth, but uh, I'll see what I could do on that. Uh, I'm not seeing any of the lights with the council, so we're gonna go to the public here.
If I may intervene real quick?
Oh, sure.
So, you probably used to hear me speak, but that's all right, um, just, I, I think the key piece here is maintaining that balance, kinda what you're talking about, and this is why I think this is a good dialogue uh, between council and staff, and hopefully a lot of the citizens and business owners will participate in this process as well, but it's, it's coming down to what you wanna regulate and what you don't want to regulate, um, and it's difficult to set those parameters, so I'll give an example, uh, when I was in Missouri, um, and this will go to the, the issue of whether or not we should regulate on private property or not, uh, we had a big, I don't know if I wanna call it a concert, but it was like a, a performance thing that came out of the, out of the Kansas City area that had a history, and we have it listed on here, a history of the event, uh, that continued to have problems and issues, uh, you, you'd have uh, alcohol, you'd have illegal drug use, uh, people would come with weapons and, in a big crowd, and sometimes you would have uh, maybe some, some potential gang activity there, and next thing you know, you have this big venue and a bunch of people there, and uh, you know, there'd be a shooting, people would get hurt, um, and we just, we got to a point that we really didn't want that type of event within our community, but without these regulations in place, you really have no latitude to say no, that that can't happen in our community, and so uh, just, just be cautious of that, unfortunately, a lot of our regulations are probably written because something happened at some point that we didn't want to repeat it in our community, and so we made a rule, even though ninety, ninety percent of the people probably abide by that and aren't a problem, you're protecting against that one or two percent when it could happen. Uh, the other thing I would want to make sure that we uh, continue to pay attention to is when it's happening on public property, and public property means more than just a park, every, every road and sidewalk is public property, and so when you have these large events, the city is potentially liable for any type of injury or those kinds of things, and that's another avenue of, one, to make sure that is, let's get it reviewed by the police department, the fire department for those public safety needs, but also making sure, as the mayor was referring to, there's insurance in place that if something happens, the city and the taxpayers aren't bearing the full brunt of that cost of that happening, we hope it doesn't happen, but sometimes it does, and without these permits in place to make sure that insurance is in place, we put financial risk on the citizens of Pasco when we don't have that in place. So while I applied, trying to get rid of a lot of this red tape and this bureaucracy, some of those elements are in place for a specific reason that you're gonna wanna continue to maintain, so obviously, we're still gonna have a significant amount of conversation about this, this is a great start to that conversation, just some caveats that you wanna continue to pay attention to.
All right, well, thank you for that, and with no other lights, do we have anybody in the audience that would like to chime in on this? The audience is getting smaller and smaller, so going once, going twice, going three times, all right, well, let's move on to the last of the presentations, so we got Transport Benefit District, take it away, Mrs. Sigdel.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and uh, evening council, um, a very different topic now, uh, Transportation Benefit District, uh, it is a special purpose district that funds uh, transportation improvements within the area, the council can be the governing board of that district, you can combine it with council at some point with a vote, uh, there's quite a few cities, one hundred and twenty-four cities in Washington State that have adopted uh, this Transportation Benefit District, um, many different ways of collecting funding for this, uh, two, really two major ways, which is uh, your car tab fees is what I call it, but your vehicle license fees, um, twenty dollars that can be imposed immediately with a council vote, forty dollars uh, after two years, uh, and then fifty dollars uh, after the forty dollars has been in effect for another two years, so essentially four years from now, but it would be, have to be voted in by the people. Uh, currently, uh, Pasco has, does not have a Transportation Benefit District, uh, Kenwick uh, has um, a sales tax, which I apologize, didn't mention earlier, uh, you can also do uh, sales tax instead of the car tab fees, so zero point one percent sales tax can be applied with a council vote, you can also add an additional zero point one percent by the vote of the people, uh, city of Kenwick, our neighbors, uh, currently have a sales tax for this Transportation Benefit District, uh, Richland has twenty dollar car tab fees, uh, and Prosser has twenty-five, and Walla Walla, which is an example of where the citizens have voted in an additional tenth of a percent um, for transportation projects. The decision points today uh, were our sales tax versus vehicle license fee, uh, we're recommending a vehicle license fee, but um, it is up to council on what you decide to choose, uh, the geographic boundary of the district, it can be a specific boundary within the city, uh, however, we're re- recommending all city limits, uh, and a scope of where that funding would go, it is limited to transportation projects only, um, and so we're recommending payment, maintenance, and reconstruction, our street fund desperately needs funding, uh, which general fund would have to provide that starting next year, uh, and street fund does all of our maintenance and, of our street fund, all of the snow removal, things like that, that comes from our street fund, uh, it used to be funded by motor vehicle fuel taxes, and while more efficient vehicles and electric vehicles are good, uh, that also reduces the, the revenue that is coming to the cities uh, via that fund source, so it's a declining revenue that the street fund has been limping over the years on and could badly need some additional revenue. Um, the vehicle license fee of twenty dollars uh, would collect about one point three million, the sales tax fee, if it was zero point one percent, would be around two point three million dollars. Uh, we're looking for council's guidance on um, a path forward on this um, particular topic, um, and if council wishes to proceed, uh, we're looking at a council action in the next three months, um, a notification that, uh, or something to note that uh, it is only effective six months after your approval, um, so if you approve it in December, that would be July first, uh, and Department of Licensing also requires a hundred and twenty day uh, advanced notice, uh, but those, that's six months and the, and the three months can be overlapping, so you're really looking at, at minimum, six months of implementation um, after um, you make that uh, approval, so the ordinance is passed. And with that, staff is really looking for your guidance on how you want to move forward in this topic, if you'd like to, for us to bring um, um, the necessary um, actions in the coming months, we'd be more than happy to do so.
All right, uh, when you say vehicle license fee, is that like all vehicles, or like, what about motorcycles?
So there are, uh, I believe, I should've looked up motorcycles, I knew this was going to be a question, uh, in the agenda item itself, there is a list of uh, items that, of vehicles that are exempt, uh, and ones that, where this fee is applied, and I, give me just a minute here, motorcycles are not exempt, I'm sorry.
Trying to break the bank on me, or what?
You might need to streamline your motorcycles.
I'm not liking that, especially for people who are addicted to motorcycles, but uh, all right.
If I may, one other point on the difference between the fee versus the sales tax, so I would assume that your vehicle fee is paid by those that reside within your city limits, right? Versus the sales tax, that, that's that point of sale, so that means that if, and, and hopefully, as we're successful in economic development, and hopefully maybe we can flip a little bit of the script in the Tri-Cities area, that we become a destination for retail sales, that means that the more inflow of, of purchasing you can get within your community, that means if they're coming from other communities, they're bringing that revenue to your community, because they're coming, they're driving on your roads, those kinds of things, they're wearing down your infrastructure, so the sales tax helps a lot of that be paid for by non-Pasco residents, whereas your vehicle fee is strictly on the backs of your Pasco residents, so that's, not saying that should change the recommendation, I just want the council to be aware that that is one of the significant differences between these two funding streams.
All right, I appreciate the clarification, as there's two sides to every story, or two sides to every story, just, I know, like, as a business owner, if the sales tax is high, then people go elsewhere, I know, I, I stopped shopping at pretty much Seattle just cause it's, you know, when Seattle lasts more than God does, it's hard to buy any kind of furniture or antique there, so um, I'm just saying, it does cause a problem, but I, you do have a valid point, I mean, it's, never thought of it that way, but I will say it, uh, it's difficult when you're a business owner and you want people to come, you want the sales tax as low as possible, so it's, um, so with that in mind, I, my druthers would be the vehicle license fee, but uh, I'd like to start off with uh, Councilwoman Braas.
Thank you, thank you for, you answered some of my questions even before I asked, uh, Mr. Harold, um, question though, um, the sales tax, does that need to be put up for a vote?
No, the first tenth of a percent does not, it is council manic, so you can put up for, put it up for vote within the council, the second one, so like Walla Walla, their, their percentage is zero point two, um, so that second one has to be the vote of the people.
Nice, okay, uh, thank you for that clarification, my, my vote would say sales tax, um, we have, we are an old city, we have, uh, we need, we need to upkeep our roads by everyone that passes through, and my, my take is the sales tax instead of the vehicle fee, thank you.
All right, thank you for that comment, uh, we got Mayor Protim Grim.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, yes, while I agree, obviously, some of our streets need funds, um, like the mayor, I would definitely be opposed to the sales, sales tax, um, and would uh, lean towards the, the vehicle licensing fee, and really, um, also, as the mayor said, I really appreciate you bringing that up, Mr. Stewart, because that is a way of spreading the, the cost amongst people who pass through and not just the residences, but I think until we get more businesses and become a shopping destination, or some people would say where they can actually come to Pasco and buy a pair of pants, as we, we heard that phrase used, um, and become more of a shopping destination, I would uh, lean towards um, doing that, and another reason for that is, would it be, if we were to um, to go ahead with this and um, add twenty dollars, would that be permanent? Could that by council action remove that at some point?
Yes, you can, you can disband the Transportation Benefit District, and um, I'm looking at our city attorney, I, we are not sure of that exact process, but you could definitely disband Transportation Benefit District at some point.
And before, maybe he chimes in too, but the sales tax, could we back that off once that would be imposed?
Yes, a- as in you would essentially have, if it's, if, if it is, goes to the vote of the people, very likely not, but if you're just talking about the council manic one, then you would just disband the Transportation Benefit District, you'd stop collecting the revenue, there would be steps that you would need to go through to do that, but yes, you can.
Yeah, so I'm a little rusty on this, it's been probably eight years since we did this in Sunnyside years ago, but essentially, uh, the sales tax issue is a little different in that um, the first one percent, obviously, you can do by council medic, the, the second one percent, you have to do with a vote, but uh, the sales tax uh, generally doesn't, isn't able to exceed ten years unless you have bonds that are associated with the projects that are part of it, and one of the things that I remember having to do is making sure in the ballot title, when you go to the voters, you have to say that it's limited to ten years, and then it can be renewed for an additional ten years, so the, I think the sales tax is, is unique in that it does require renewal, and it does have a sunset a sunset provision associated with it. I'd have to get tuned up on this a little more to be able to properly educate you. But, Mon, that's what you're interested in, that'll help me, you know, to dig in the right spot.
Okay, I appreciate that. And, you know, I just want to say that I know a lot of people have moved here for our lower cost of living. But I think if you ask the average citizen, they probably are not feeling that right now. And I think we could all relate to that at some level. But here in Pasco, as we've seen the information again and again, we are really disadvantaged compared to our neighboring municipalities. Here we have, I think, Ms. Sidell, you've let us know, we have the highest assessed value of property within the Tri-Cities. But yet, I think we collect close to $10 million less a year compared with the two larger municipalities on the other side of the creek. And so it's hard. I know our citizens, on one hand, want infrastructure that is similar to what they see in other parts. But like, I think all of us can relate, none of us really want to pay for it. But yet, obviously, we need these things. We need a functioning city and roads that we can drive on and those kind of things. And so I think we do have to do some movement on this. Again, I would be more towards the licensing fee. I would be completely opposed to the sales tax. But, you know, it's something maybe down the road, if we actually became a shopping destination of some sort, we could actually look at. But yeah, Mr. Mayor, I would probably, I would lean towards the licensing fee at this time. And, you know, I know the other part of it that the citizens ask a lot, is, you know, it's efficiencies and streamlining. And I know there's always some improvements to be made, but at the same time, I brought up that example a couple of weeks ago, just kind of where I was at a private property and, or a private party and heard kind of some frontline workers talking about how, you know, just within their family unit, how one of the discussions within the city of Pasco is preserving over time. And, you know, preserving the city's budget and all that. So I think that I know is happening to definitely a degree. And so I appreciate you guys continuing to look at that, because I think that's going to always draw the attention of the city, is just make sure that everybody's tightening their belts. So thanks for all your work you're doing on that, too.
All right. Well, thank you for that, Mayor Protim Graham. We've got Councilman Peralos.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be quick, yeah. I'll be in support of the vehicle licensing fee, so the $20 fee. You know, we can't, we can't let our roads crumble. You know, like Ms. Sidell said, the revenue is declining. The proportion of share from the state is declining. And so we need to all kind of put money into a pot. You know, I was actually over on Court Street the other day, kind of walking by, I didn't notice how bad it is right there. I was like, oh, wow. And then I saw some new asphalt. And so it just, it made me think of this, because I knew this was going to be coming up. And so, you know, we, I know a lot of us on the council, we kind of have a conservative bent, our values, we want to make sure we get a bang for our buck. But the bucks aren't coming in anymore from a lot of different places. And so we need to ask our residents for a little bit extra taxes so that we can maintain our roads. It's no different from our police and fire. We need to invest in that stuff as we continue to grow. My only ask would be that, if we're asking the residents to give us more money for things that we need to invest in and maintain, is that I think we should be really looking at what we do next in regards to the road projects. I think the residents need to have a voice. What are the biggest priorities? I know we have our CIP, we have our TIP, but I think there's products on there that they would like to see that money go towards. I know it's not really relevant, but especially when it comes to road preservation, a lot of people in my district reach out to me, look at our roads, look at our street over here. So I really do think we need to figure out a way, a better mechanism, that we maintain and preserve the roads that really need it first. Because when it comes down to it, people don't have a problem paying taxes, they just feel like their government wasted, they put it in the wrong places, they know it should have been over here, why haven't they fixed Road 68? Like, on and on and on. So I think we need to be close to the people, listen to them, put this money towards things that, well, at the end of the day, will make them feel good that they have good storage of their tax dollars here at the city hall. So with that, I'll be done. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Peralos. Councilwoman Blaisdell, would you like to chime in, at least we could have us all our opinions?
My opinion would be the $20, just because I think about the hotels, the sales tax and the hotel tax. And that would push us over 11% for tourism. So I would rather pay $20 per vehicle and even if it takes up all of the bikes that you have in your garage, I mean, it's, I'm going with the $20 because I only have one car.
Ah, no mercy. All right, yeah, maybe I need to pare down some of my bigger bike collection, but also I'm giving Pasco a lot of money. So anyway, I'm not seeing any other lights. Anybody in the audience would like to chime in? Hopefully, my wife isn't going to chime in on that one. That's like, so, okay. Oh, I guess we have another comment by Councilwoman Braas.
Thank you. Just a follow-up question. Say we move forward with the $20 fee. And then at some point, when our sales taxes improve, because everything's changing, give it 10 years, can we reverse that? Can council actually, at that point, reverse from the $20 license fee to the sales tax fee?
We can bring that back to you and see.
That can be.
We're not sure.
Council manic.
Yeah. We're not sure, but we can, we can research that and come back to you. We will need to bring, there needs to be some public hearings, things like that on this topic regardless. So there'll be some more opportunities to talk about it.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
All right. And let me give a second call and third call. Not seeing anything. So with that, I think we're all done with that section. So we're going to move on to item six with this miscellaneous council discussion. Is there anybody that? I was going to chime in real quick. I did have something that, we're talking about the flea market. I would like to see something come up in the council, or at least give us a chance, the sale of dogs and cats at the flea market. I'd love to see a ban on that. I don't know if that's something that we could maybe put on the agenda. It's one thing if people are giving it away, but when they're selling it, I think it just breeds backyard breeders. And we'd like to do whatever we can to help out the animal shelter. I'm seeing Angela Fish on. It's good that she's going to mention something like that.
Yeah, absolutely. So staff has been working on looking at that as well. And we have approached the Animal Control Authority with the work plan. And we've talked about the private sale of animals. But we can get more information on that for you all as well.
Okay. Hopefully, get something in front of us while I'm mayor here towards the end of the year. So I'd love to be able to have the chance to vote on that. And I don't know what the time is on that, but if we could get that done in the next three months, it'd be much appreciated. So, oh, we've got Councilwoman Peralos.
I have this different topic, but definitely support that. So, you know, I think if anyone had read the Herald, or it came to you, or someone did a story about Kennewick really ramping up the education with fireworks. I gave kudos to the city of Kennewick. I think that's something we need to be doing. We heard people come in, saw all the comments on Facebook and social media. I really do think if we're not going to, I guess, ban them again, we really need to step up the education, so, and then also some enforcement, but I think educating people. I'm kind of, I'm going to watch what Kennewick's doing closely here for the next year and kind of what that looks like. But I think if we're not looking to do anything, I guess, from a council standpoint, I think we should definitely support education. So if that's coming from the police department or the fire department, and maybe a collaboration, I do think we need to do something in the same way Kennewick's looking at. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you for that. I'm not seeing any other lights. So with that, we're going to move on to City Manager Harold.
Sorry, I just wanted to provide a couple of updates real quick. First, and this has been touched on a couple of times tonight, but with regards to the employee appreciation, I particularly wanted to give gratitude to Jesse Rice, Brent Kobalek, and Elizabeth Livio, and Vanessa Flores, who are the organizers for that from the staff level. Also appreciate the council members coming out and helping serve food as well as the other department heads. I also became aware today that due to budget cuts, none of that was funded by the city. It was all funded out of the pockets of our management team and our department heads. So definitely a special thank you to them for opening their personal pockets to pay for that on behalf of the employees. I also wanted to provide a brief update on the open council position for District Four. We've had four applicants for that, one of which withdrew when they realized that they didn't reside within the district. So as of right now, you have three applicants for that position.
All right. Well, thank you for that. I pay it much appreciated. So with that, we're going to move on to item seven, which is executive session, and I'm not seeing anything listed. So with that, we're moved to number eight, which is music to my ears, adjournments. Thank you.